So would you call the roll, please, Ms. Goodell?
Absolutely. Mr. Ankuma.
Yes.
Mr. Castillo.
Here.
Ms. Gill.
Here.
Mr. Lawrence.
Here.
Let's see, who did I miss? Castillo, Gill, Lawrence. I didn't say you? No, just Mr. Castillo. I must have skipped Mr. Castillo.
We're all here. I'm here.
Great. Okay, we have a quorum.
All right. Would you all rise and join me in saying a pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Need to adopt our agenda? Would I have a motion to adopt our agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ankuma. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or abstaining? All right, we have an agenda. Now we come to reports and recognitions, and we'll begin with FCC EA ESP recognitions. And we have Amanda Blanchard here. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Amanda Blanchard, Falls Church City Education Association, come to bring you greetings in American Education Week. And I believe this is our fourth year that we have actively engaged and celebrated our educational support professionals. So our secretaries, our custodians, our paraprofessionals, our cafeteria staff, anyone and everyone who is technically not a professional staff member, but they are way busy and way important to everything that we do in our school system. They are the other half of everything we do. And it would be impossible to do what teachers do in the classroom without them, what happens in the school building without them. And you should have a whole plethora of recognition in your board docs there. And please do take the time to look at the wonderful words that staff have said about each other and the great work that we're doing. As we move into the budget season, please keep them in mind. They are just as important as all the other moving pieces that we have in a school budget. And it is important that we recognize the work they do, reward them for the work that they do, both in their salary and benefits. So again, I encourage you, if you've not been out to the schools yet this year, see us, come see them, and look at what we do and recognize that they are an integral part in everything that we do in our Falls Church City school system. Thank you so much. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you, Ms. Blanchard. That's a very timely reminder, and we look forward to your support as we head into that season. All right, next up, we have our legislative package. Villa Wise, welcome.
Good evening, Board Chair, members of the Board, Dr. Jones. I'm pleased and proud to be here again today after many years representing Falls Church Public Schools at Virginia General Assembly. It doesn't seem possible, but this is my 30th year down in Richmond lobbying. And some of the same things that I've been lobbying for from the very beginning are still there, especially cost of competing, and we'll talk about that a little later, and the opening of school before Labor Day. The main thing that we're talking about, two main things this year in your legislative package. The first are mandates. The second is funding. You know what a difference it makes to school divisions when the state decides that this is going to be something that you are going to do and that they mandate that the school divisions have to do it without the funding and without talking to you beforehand and seeing, is this realistic to do? So two of the things that we're talking about in mandates in the package. One, we really don't want any new mandates. If you do have new mandates, we want you to fully fund them. And the other, because of some situations that we've had with mandates over the years, we're suggesting that the General Assembly have legislation to approve an advisory committee that would look at health and school issues and make decisions, not decisions, but recommendations to General Assembly about what things are realistic to do for schools. A very wonderful senator, Senator John Miller, was the patron of this legislation two years ago. Senator Miller died of a heart attack last year, and this was one of the things he felt very, very strongly about, was student health and the kinds of things that you're being pushed off onto schools. So this is sort of in memory of him, that some of our legislators are going to put this in. And it's something that I hope you feel as strongly about as I do. Now talk about the specific issues. As this year, as every year, funding is the number one, and it's always a major issue. And this year, the State Board of Education, under the leadership of your own Joan Wadiska, has come up with standards of quality that they believe, they are saying to the General Assembly, these are the standards of quality that we believe you need in Virginia, and we believe that you need to fund these standards of quality. What are some of them that haven't been funded before and that they're changing the standards? Mostly in the areas of things like school nurses, school psychologists, school social workers, guidance counselors, assistant principals. And so we know that there is going to be a lot of talk about it this year because this is something the State Board hasn't done in a long time, is come up with standards of quality. We think, as a State Board, this is what we need in Virginia, and so you guys need to then fund it. So that's going to be a big fight to get the funding for those. You remember that in 2009, the General Assembly, of course, we were in the recession at that point, the General Assembly decided to come up with a new way of funding support services for school divisions. And so that has had a lot of impact. Hunter can tell you much more than I can about the impact it has had for you. And so another area that is in the proposed legislative package is to go back to the form of funding support services as it had been done in the past. And then, of course, as always, we support continuation of the cost of competing. You'd be really interested that Sunday in the Times Dispatch, there was an editorial, and it was written by three superintendents from far southwest. And they're having a lot of trouble with funding in southwest. And so what they're suggesting is they want a cost of competing, too. And they're not saying they need a cost of competing the way we do. They're saying, in order to get anybody to come to southwest Virginia, we need to have this kind of cost of competing. So I thought you'd find it interesting that it's in our legislative packages up here in northern Virginia, and now it's going to be in a legislative package from southwest. I talked about the school advisory health board. As you all know, there is an SOL Innovations Committee that has been working very hard and coming up with an awful lot of what is happening now in high school redesign, happening in assessment, happening in accreditation. And so we have a position here that you support, the work of the SOL Innovations Committee and the legislation that is introduced as a result of that work. And I've talked about the standards of quality. Yes, your support funding the standards of quality. Virginia retirement system, and we talk about this almost every year, and again, Hunter can tell you better than I can, but what happened in General Assembly a couple of years ago is they said, we want to fully fund the VRS for teachers. And so they came up with a timeline. So we're going to do so much this year, so much this year, so much this year. The timeline was moving along fairly well. Then, when it looked like there was a lot of money in Virginia, this was before they got the revenue projections, they said, oh, well, we're doing so well with this, why don't we just go ahead and finish it all off during this fiscal year rather than the timeline that we had? This has a huge impact on school divisions, as you know. You are at the point now where probably about 20% of your payroll is going to VRS for the three things that it funds, for it funds retiree healthcare and life insurance. So what we're suggesting here is just stay with what you said you were going to do in the first place. Don't move another year ahead. And then we have our continuing issues, the ones that you've seen over the years. Of course, returning control of the school calendar to local school boards. And two things have happened since the last time we talked about this. The first is that Fairfax County now has a weather waiver. So Fairfax, Loudoun, Prince William, everybody is going to be able to start before Labor Day, except those of us right here in very northern Virginia, and then going down to Richmond and going down to Tidewater. So that's the first thing. And so we're saying, you know, if almost everybody in the state can do it, why can't the rest of us? But the other thing that happened, happened in Maryland. And that was when Governor Hogan, sort of unilaterally, said, okay, we're, you know, we're not going to start before Labor Day. We just, you know, don't want to do that in Maryland anymore. So we've got the two things going on. Usually, we were able to say, oh, but nobody else, you know, no other state does this, you know, legislates you have to start at a certain time. Well, now Maryland is going to. So we'll see what happens this year. And the last two pieces you've had in your package for a couple of years, and one of those is about the virtual Virginia schools. And there are actually sort of two of them. The Board of Education, Department of Education, does have a virtual Virginia high school. And so any student in Virginia who wants to take all their courses virtually can do that through the Department of Education. Then, on the other hand, there's been legislation for years to have the Virginia Virtual School, and this would be one that is done with the private providers. And in that, school divisions that had students going to the virtual Virginia school would have to pay, it was around $6,000 a student, students going there. So especially since any student who wants to can go there without a cost to a school division, we are definitely opposed to the legislation that's out there that would provide that school divisions would have to pay for that in the school that would be formed using the private providers. And Toni knows much better about this than I do because she's been working on this all the time she's been here. And the last is obviously, you know, prohibiting any diversion of public funds going to private schools. So I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Wise. Any questions? Mr. Lawrence.
I've just got a couple, and you've already answered one. For the SOL issue, the way we wrote it, it basically says, any legislation that's introduced that comes out of the committee, we're going to support. That sounds odd that we would agree to support something when we haven't even seen it. I mean, am I reading it wrong?
No, that's the way I wrote it because what has come out of there has all been really good kinds of things for schools. But you're right, you know, who knows what's going to happen with this one? Now, one of the reasons that I get so invested in this is Patrick Murphy, who's the superintendent of schools in Arlington, is a chair of one of the subcommittees in the SOL advisory, the SOL Innovations Committee. And so I've been somewhat involved in the kinds of things that they're recommending. And so it doesn't, it's a large committee, and it has people from private industry, has people from different, from local governments, obviously, and all sorts of folks from different areas of education. I can change that to say, to say something about supports their recommendations or something like that.
Or hopes to, I just, I-
Sure, I understand, yeah, that's a good point.
Yeah, I mean, well, that's me. I don't know about anybody else. I just, I'd never agree to support something I haven't seen, especially when it comes to legislation.
Sounds like an easily made tweak, so.
Yes, I can easily make-
Yeah, and the committee's been doing good things, and they're trying to make the SOLs not as horribly pointless as they used to be.
Sure.
So, you know, I'm optimistic, but still.
No, that's a good point, and I'll make a change with that. Thank you.
And then the other question was about the SOQ changes. Did you send those to us? I don't remember having seen them, but honestly, sometimes we get so much-
No, I didn't, but I can.
Okay, please, again, just-
Yeah, I'll get them to you.
We should-
Sure.
At least have looked at them before we say we support them.
I'll be glad to do that.
Okay. And when do you need this? Obviously, not tonight, but-
By the 11th of January.
Okay, so well before January.
The General Assembly starts the 11th of January.
Right.
So, you know, we've got a lot of time to work on this. And who knows what will happen between now and then? You know, the governor's going to come out with his budget. We've had terrible revenue projections, and yet there were some new revenue projections today, weren't there, Hunter? That said that they were, you know, 4% more than they were this time last year. So that's, you know, it's hard to know what's going to even happen by then. Plus, we haven't seen any of the legislation. And nobody's really filed much in the way of legislation.
All right, okay, but because there's the legislative, the annual legislative breakfast is, what, early December, like normal?
It's in December. I'm trying to remember which date it is, the 15th, 14th?
Oh, okay, so that would be after our December meeting, so we could have this well before that.
Sure.
Okay.
Yes, we're going to, we've been having a hard time finding a good place to have it. And so we're going to have it at Wakefield High School. So it'll be pretty easy for you to get to, and I think that'll be more convenient than some of the areas we've had before.
Yeah. Okay, great, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, well, thank you for your 30 years of support, and we look forward to a successful legislative season with your help. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next, we come to public comment. In accordance with School Board Bylaws 2.30, the time for each speaker is limited to three minutes. Additional written statements may be submitted to the clerk for dissemination to board members and for the record. We'll start with the advisory committee budget recommendations that we have teed up here. We'll start first with CEAC, and I believe, Mr. Fernandez, you'll be speaking about that. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Sean Fernandez. I am a special education paraprofessional at George Mason High School. I'd like to thank my colleagues for this opportunity to represent them today. I'd also like to thank the entire Falls Church City community for producing the best and brightest students. Every individual works together as a whole to achieve this greatness, which is exemplified by our employees. Falls Church City Public School employees contribute to the success of each student in our nationally-recognized school system. We're working harder than ever to sustain the support needed to maintain this level of excellence to reflect the ever-growing demand. CEAC recommends some improvements. First, a full step for all employees. Second, a cost of living increase to all employees who are at the top of their scale. Third, a recalibration of all employee salaries, mainly focusing on support staff. Fourth, CEAC recommends an adjustment to the school board contribution for healthcare benefits for part-time employees. Fifth, an increase in staffing to meet current and increasing demands from building size and student enrollment. Sixth, CEAC requests substitutes for support staff, particularly paraprofessionals and special ed paraprofessionals. Last, CEAC recommends a return to eight from 7.5-hour workdays for paraprofessionals. CEAC remains committed to ensuring that compensation, both salary and benefits, continue to increase for everyone. This commitment motivates, retains, and develops valued employees and creates an environment that attracts talent and diversity. CEAC would like to thank the superintendent and the school board for the continued efforts to support employees. Thank you for your opportunity to have input into this budget process. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, next up, we'll have CEAC. Ms. Cora, welcome.
Evening, friends. Nice to see you all again this year. Happy to be speaking on behalf of CEAC, the Professional Employee Advisory Committee, once again this school year. Keep it short and sweet, but mainly, CEAC recommends that we offer a full step on the salary scale for professional employees. We're grateful for the commitment shown by the school board and the superintendent, everyone working together to close the salary gap between Falls Church City schools and surrounding school districts. And now is the time for professional staff to receive a step on the pay scale. CEAC recognizes that this helps Falls Church City schools retain and recruit the top-quality professionals and the most qualified teachers possible. Two, we recommend that when facing difficult budget decisions, the school board and superintendent continue to ensure small class sizes and enough personnel to continue our excellent educational programming. A larger student population, as has happened every single year for the last many years, requires adequate administrative, counseling, specialists, and support staff at each and every building. CEAC recommends that no further benefits reduction take place and that benefit increases take place, specifically in areas of professional development. And I think there's been a very good effort to maintain that this school year, and we appreciate that, and all of the professional staff are grateful for that opportunity. CEAC will use all of the budget tools and available materials this school year to offer continuing opportunities for professional staff to provide input and ask questions throughout this budgeting process. Special attention will be paid to the possible redistribution of funds in order to address changing needs at different buildings. We look forward to continuing our work together and making decisions about these budget allocations. CEAC is committed to ensuring that professional staff budget recommendations are heard and understood. I think that's something that we've struggled with being able to do in the past, and it's, we've refocused ourselves as a representative body of our organization and our professional employees to really be able to disseminate the budget information as clearly and successfully as possible and as early and often as possible. So thank you again for giving us this opportunity to have input in the budget process, and we look forward to working closely together throughout. As always, CEAC fully endorses the recommendations of CEAC and CEAC. And thank you for your time and effort in your work supporting our schools.
Thank you very much. And I believe we'll not be getting a presentation of CEAC tonight, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. Well, I appreciate both of the advisory committees coming out. I will tell you, I think this will be probably the most difficult budget year that we have had in recent memory, and I look forward to all of your help, both as we enter the budget process and then as we deal with our counterparts on city council. All right, next we come to public comment, starting with Susan Carney. Welcome, Ms. Carney.
Thank you, I'm Susan Carney. I live at 410 Great Falls Street in Falls Church. I'm here this evening to publicly thank Dr. Toni Jones for her efforts on behalf of our students and our community as superintendent of our school division. The school board, when they hired Toni, was looking for a change agent who would come here and bring us into the current century in terms of technology and data, would modernize our facilities, and would institute a culture of continual improvement, which we felt was lacking in the division before she arrived. And I think she's, while not perfect, done a wonderful job in many, many areas. I spent a lot of time today trying to figure out what to highlight. There were many things, and I'm just going to, in no particular order, talk about some of them. One, 100% graduation rate. We did not have that in the city of Falls Church prior to Dr. Toni Jones being here. That's a huge lift for our staff. It takes a lot of time and creativity, but we've done that the last several years under her leadership. And I can tell you, as a parent, I would not want my child to be one who did not graduate from high school. Two, she's implemented a number of programs in personalized learning so that each child gets what they need. These include the use of student data by teachers to measure their growth discreetly each year rather than as a cohort and to be able to differentiate their learning. The hybrid learning was instituted under Toni, and it's been a great success for a wide variety of our students at the high school. And then the summer academy for our kids that need a little bit of extra learning in the summer in Richmond or who want to take an extra class to stay on target. In terms of facilities, Thomas Jefferson Elementary was overseen by Toni. We got extra classroom and other facilities for the same budget in that building, and it was delivered on time and on budget, which was amazing. We also have Jessie Thackeray, which, as I go around the state, people, I can't even tell you how jealous they are of that facility that we have here in Falls Church for our kids. She implemented a number of access and equity programs so our kids are fed, they have warm clothes, they have access to technology and books and other things they need if their parents can't afford them so that they can perform well in school. She's completed the implementation of IB K-12, probably the only school in the state, one of the few in the nation, that does that. And in my role as a member of the College Board at Northern Virginia Community College, working with employers throughout the state, I hear constantly from them that what they need from our students when they graduate is critical thinking, collaboration, and project-oriented skills, which is what, of course, the IB program brings to our kids. Here in the city of Falls Church, she was able to win unprecedented budget increases for us as our student population grew, which led to smaller class sizes, which I heard about just a moment ago, as well as to increases in pay for our teachers and other staff. And the list goes on and on and on. She got principals out of their offices and into the classrooms. She increased accountability on the part of teachers by improving the evaluation system. These changes were not championed by 100% of the people, and they're difficult, as change always is, but they're important to our kids. And so the one thing I would say, Dr. Jones, is I appreciate the fact that anything you did here was really done because of your support of kids. Sometimes parents may not like it, or school board members may not like it, or other people may not like it. But for you, it was all about the kids, and I think that that is probably the best compliment that I can give you. So thank you. I wish you great success in Fairfield. I think they will be happy to have you. And if our next superintendent can do half as well in her or his first five years here, I think our community will be very well served. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Carney. All right, next up, we have Archie Piadi. Welcome.
Very much, thank you. Good evening, chairman, superintendents, and members. I'm a mom of a third grader and a first grader, here to share with you some thoughts. Since last week's national election, there have been a number of threatening comments and hate crimes in schools across our country. Black, Latino, Asian, and Middle Eastern students have been made to feel unwelcome and afraid in the schools where they should feel safe to grow and to learn. The impact of these acts on all children in a community can be very severe. Kids don't want to go to school, and disunity can become the norm. I know. As a child, I experienced race-related taunting and violence, and it left an impact on my trust in adults and my love for school. My heart was broken last week when my six-year-old daughter said, after the election, that she was afraid she would have to leave America now. I know that Falls Church City is an inclusive community. I know that our schools welcome all of our kids regardless of their race, color, religion, immigration status, sexual orientation, or other aspects of their identity. I see it every day in the smiling, warm faces of our teachers, in the lessons of the International Baccalaureate Curriculum, and in parent-teacher events like International Night. That's exactly why I'm here to invite the school board to consider following the example of other school districts nationwide and issuing a simple statement of commitment to inclusivity and in welcoming all Falls Church children in our schools. To me, this is not a partisan issue, but a teachable moment for our children and for the residents of our community. Today, when I picked up my daughter after her music class after school, I asked her how her day was, and she said, "Perfect," with a big smile on her face. That's what I want for all of our children in our community, and I know you do, too. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. All right. Next, we have Allison Hira, please. Allison, you'll have to help me, is it Hira, Hero? Hira.
I didn't know how to pronounce the word. Good evening.
Welcome.
I come to you tonight as the parent of two FCCPS students and to ask that our system publicly recognize and reinforce the values of diversity, inclusion, and safety. In a time of unprecedented increase in hate crimes, as reported by the FBI and the Southern Poverty Law Center- Poverty Law Center, and the announcement of a widely-recognized white supremacist to be a national advisor, I urge the school board to take a proactive stance against bigotry in all of its forms. As a first step, we should reiterate our values publicly as school systems such as Alexandria and others have. We need to actively assure our children that they are safe and that discrimination and harassment will not be tolerated. They talk, and they are worried. Morning after the election, when I had to tell my third grader what happened, his immediate question was whether we had to move, because his grandpa wasn't born here, and he heard that everyone that wasn't born here needed to be sent back. I hope to make this an ongoing conversation. It's not enough to just not perpetrate acts of hate. We need to be a leader community in actively denouncing it. This isn't a political issue, but a moral and ethical one, one that tells our children what kind of world we want them to be a part of and the kind of future we want them to create.
Thank you very much. All right, next up, we have Allison Brown. Allison Brown. Good evening.
Hi, I'm Allison Brown. I have just a couple of brief points. I have kids at MEH, one kid at MEH, and one kid at TJ. And first, I want to support the recommendation for school leadership to send a formal message reminding everybody that we support values of inclusion, of diversity, and that we're going to stand against bigotry and any type of hate crime or step toward that. I think our kids do need to hear it. So many of them were paying attention to the election. We were all talking about it in our homes, they were talking about it in the playground, and they should hear from school leadership that nothing that happened in the election changes the view of Falls Church in terms of being an inclusive community. I'm also here to learn more about the start of the budget process. It is going to be an incredibly important budget year, and many of us are going to be learning as much as we can about it, paying attention. You know, one thing I noticed in my teacher conference last week was that when I asked her, "Well, you know, you mentioned you're going to have STAR tests again in a few weeks. Why is that? You already did it at the beginning of the year." And she really couldn't give me a response. She didn't know why there was that standardized test coming up, why they would be repeating the standardized test so many times during the year. So, that's something that I know some people looked at last year, but really needs to be looked at this year, whether we're doing too much standardized testing that goes above and beyond state requirements and doesn't give any meaningful information to the teachers. Thanks.
Thank you very much. All right. Sleep, so, next up, we come to... Any other public comment? All right. Seeing none, we'll go next to recognitions, and we have the VSPA Academy Awards. I don't think there'll be any gold statuettes, but Dr. Jones.
First of all, school board members earn the Academy credits through participation in VSPA meetings, going to Academy sessions, and through all of the VSPA governance and service activities. And we have three people who are being recognized for 15 credits this year, which is a certificate of recognition, which is at the seat of each individual. Erin Gill, school board member, Hunter Kimble, and also Lawrence Webb, who's not with us tonight, he's on business travel. We have also two members receiving the Award of Excellence, which are 48 credits over a two-year period, and that is Michael Ankuma and Margaret Ward. So, congratulations to our school board Academy winners. Thank you.
Yes, congratulations to everybody for your hard work, and I guess I need to get on the stick and start getting some credits. All right, we will do an additional VSPA Award of Achievement, and that is to Dr. Jones. This will probably be, barring some extraordinarily unforeseen circumstance, Dr. Jones's last regular meeting. We'll have some additional meetings, but soon she will be going to Fairfield, Connecticut, to be superintendent of schools there. As Ms. Carney noted, Dr. Jones leaves with a record of great achievement. She has exceeded the average three-year life expectancy of a superintendent, beaten the odds. We were talking about something today that was another challenge that she was dealing with, and I asked her why she would do this job, and she said, "Because I love the kids." And I think her commitment to the ultimate beneficiaries of this system are the children, and I think Dr. Jones has done a great job keeping that mission in mind. Like all the people up here and in this room, she is not perfect, but I think she's done a wonderful job. We have a couple of things for her, the first of which is a BAE partnership brick pathway. A commemorative brick has been purchased for you. We look forward to installing it from its old site to the new high school.
Awesome.
And then, in addition, we have a picture here, which I will let you open, of you with the school mascots for you to remember. So, thank you again for all your service. Don't be a stranger, and...
Mr. Brett took that one.
Come on, show it to everybody. Yeah, that's a great picture. So, we'll miss you, Toni. Thank you for everything. We could say something now, or we could say something during the school board member comments later? I don't know if anybody wants to offer any remarks at this point.
You know, I was thinking of waiting till the end, but, you know, especially given what Susan said in this, I was glad Susan came up and spoke, because she certainly knows what Toni did better than any of us up here, because she was part of bringing you on board, and you were brought in as a change agent, which is, you know, a mixed blessing. You're brought on by the board to do something, and what you're doing is probably going to annoy a lot of people, but I think you did what the board wanted. I just want to stress two things. One was, all the work you've done on buildings, you have gotten us going on GM, you finished TJ, you did Thackeray, you went through three lovely years with Fairfax County to get us so that we can expand Mount Daniel and, you know, bring it up to ADA compliance and other things. So, what you did here is going to benefit kids for decades, literally, simply because you've gotten us better facilities. But the other thing is the pay raise, the teacher pay raise that, you know, we had to spread out over four years because it was such a big chunk. You did something that most people don't do. You saw a potential problem, brought it to the school board, and said, "This is what the solution is, and you need to get ahead of it." And we actually did it, and we had buy-in from the city. And let's face it, what people tend to do is wait till there is a problem, and then bend over backwards to try to fix it. And this is one where you saw a real potential problem, where if people realized what they could do, just by moving, you know, a mile in one direction and teaching, you know, a couple miles away, they could make a lot of money in some cases. So, I think you really were forward-looking on that, and I appreciate the fact that you took something that was a potential problem and made it so that it was not. So, I've truly, truly loved working with you. I no longer like Connecticut at all, but I do hope we see you in the future.
Ms. Ward.
Well, first of all, I would like to reiterate all the things Susan said about you, and I know she could have gone on for a lot longer than her designated time, and I just want to echo all those things that she said. And as a parent, several children who went through the high school system while you were here, we've had such a great experience, and in good times and in bad, we've always gotten, my sons always have gotten what they needed. And I have you, as well as our wonderful teachers and administrators, to thank for that. I will say, as a teacher, one of the things that I just find incredible that you did is the personalized learning, the High C classes. You respect the diversity, the learning diversity of our student population, and that is, that just, to me, was one of the most incredible things you've done since being here. I loved working with you. I'm going to miss you. I found you to be fair, honest, compassionate, even when you had those tough calls to make. Ultimately, they always were for the benefit of the kids. And I know you had some tough decisions you had to make, but you always came out thoughtful and fair. And I really appreciate you. I enjoyed working with you, and I feel like I'm a better person for having gotten to work with you, Toni. Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Gill?
We really had a chance to work together for a very brief amount of time, but I'll say, I always have admired your tenacity and your, to quote, your stamina. I don't know how you do, how you have the energy that you have, and how you get to all the events you go to, and how you get through each day with so much enthusiasm and energy. I'm always impressed, and I have no doubt you will have a very successful career as a superintendent, no matter where you go. Thank you.
No pressure, Ms. Ankuma.
Absolutely not. Well, I guess it's all been said. Dr. Jones, thank you so much for what you did as a parent. I had one kid go through the high school while you were there, and there's another one going through now, and I think it's all, they're all benefiting from the changes you made and the technology and all the other things that have been itemized. The one thing we failed to do here is to get you to go on a vacation. So, I hope, hopefully, when you get to Fairfield, they'll let you do that. But thank you for everything. We'll miss you.
Ms. Perez.
Well, as a new student to, you know, to the United States, I wasn't attracted to graduate, so hearing how you included, you know, the High C, the personalized learning, that's what's making me graduate for that. I couldn't thank you enough. I haven't been here for very long, so I wish we could have worked more together. However, I've enjoyed every second of it. You know, you've been a pretty good influence, and it's been a blast, and, you know, I wish we could work more together. But good luck, and again, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do you want to say anything now, or do you want to wait for the superintendent's report? Wait for the superintendent's report. Okay. All right. Now, would somebody move us into closed, please?
Mr. Chairman, pursuant to the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, a move that the board convenes a closed meeting for the following purpose, to discuss or consider the identified subject matter, personnel under Section 2.2-3711A1, in particular, staff appointments, staff resignations, sorry, staff appointments, staff reassignments, staff resignations, staff retirements, staff performance, childcare leave, EPED assignments, and advisory committee appointments and resignations.
Do I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Ankuma. Would you call the roll, Mr. Kimble?
Certainly. Mr. Ankuma.
Yes.
Mr. Castillo.
Aye.
Ms. Gill.
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence. And Ms. Ward. Thank you.
All right, we should not be very long. We'll be right back.
I move that we reconvene to open session.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, tie goes to Ms. Gill. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? All right, would somebody certify the closed meeting, please?
Thank you. Mr. Chair, whereas the Falls Church Public School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3711, subsection B of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this school board, that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Falls Church Public School Board hereby certifies that, to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirement by Virginia law were discussed in a closed meeting to which this certification applies, and, two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you, Ms. Ankuma. Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Ms. Kimble, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Ankuma.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Castillo.
Aye.
Ms. Gill.
Aye.
Mr. Lawrence.
Yes.
Ms. Ward. Great, thank you.
All right, next we come up to the consent agenda, and I would seek unanimous consent to approve... unanimous consent to approve a portion of it?
It's not on, we actually pulled it off already.
Oh, it is? Okay. All right. Hold on, let's see. Having some Wi-Fi problems here. There we go, there we go. No, okay, I got it. Okay. All right. All right, next we come to Item 7.01, Personnel. This is relating to a series of personnel items. I would entertain a motion. Okay, I'll seek unanimous consent for Item 7.01, 7.02, and 7.03, 7.0... Inside our consent agenda?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. And seeing no objection, that is approved. Next, we come to Item 8, the Superintendent Search Firm. Over the past few weeks, the school board has been interviewing various search firms. Recently, we voted to select a superintendent search firm, and now we have, for action, approval of an agreement with BWP. Does anyone have a motion?
Okay, I move that the Falls Church City Public, Falls Church City School Board approve the agreement with BWP as a superintendent search firm for 2016, 2017.
Thank you, Ms. Ankuma. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Gill, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Just to bring the community up to speed, we have been working hard to make this selection. We have been consulting with BWP as we get this agreement in place, and there is a plan that is being developed that will include visits by BWP personnel to school sites. The plan, the hope, is in early December. I believe the 7th and 8th are the notional dates right now that are being considered. That will then include evening meetings with the community. They will also be preparing surveys and other materials that we should be rolling out soon now that we have an approved agreement. So, more coming soon, so stay tuned. Next, on Item 8.02, we have a childcare leave request, and I would entertain a motion for that.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the school board approve childcare leave concluding family medical leave for Mount Daniel employee effective on or around May 20 through June 30, 2017.
Do I have a second?
Aye.
Ms. Ankuma, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No abstaining? All right. Next, we have a childcare leave request. I would entertain a motion for that as well.
Mr. Chair, I move, recommend that the school board approve additional childcare leave for Mount Daniel employee effective for the 2017, '18 school year.
No, the motion is fine, it's drafted.
Motion's fine.
Do I have a second? All right, thank you. And I will, all in favor of this motion, say aye. All opposed? Nay? All in favor of this motion? say aye. All opposed? Nay. Any opposed? Nay. All in favor of this motion? Any opposed?
Yes.
Nay. Okay. Ms. Ward? The motion?
Against.
Against. Okay. Thank you very much. All right. No, that's all right. Next, we come to Item 8.04, the tech advisory committee update. Dr. Jones?
Are you the clicker, Lisa? Thank you. I know it's up there, but... This was at the request of a board member who just wanted us to review a couple of things that we had talked about at the tech advisory. As you know, in the budget this year, it is the end of the three-year lease, and so it's helping the community understand what that leasing structure, but also what the school board, because there's just people that don't understand what that actually means. Just as a reminder, the charge from the school board to the committee was primarily to review the current device structure and academic needs of each building, and it really was to help us, because the budget is being formulated now in terms of looking at what needs to go into the budget. The committee is continuing, I think, at a much deeper level than just looking at the device and the funding aspect. Overwhelmingly, a lot of people want to discuss more about the programmatic aspect of technology, and so they've kind of moved on from really talking about the device aspect. And it was about 70, or was it 75, Lisa? Or about 75%. So go ahead and move on and let the teachers have what they've requested. And there is the letter on board docs, I think, tonight as well, for you, Marty put it on there, from the high school staff. Overwhelmingly, almost all of the high school staff joined in their joint letter, and they did a really good job of talking about how they use the device and why a particular device is important to them. There are three drivers to the tech budget, and again, you'll see this as we start building the budget. The people, infrastructure, hardware, software services, and teaching and learning tools. And you really have two components to the people. You have the infrastructure team, which is like Deng. We just promoted Deng to our director, and our instructional team. And when you look at what that people group looks like, there's a director of technology. We have an infrastructure team of five, and that is system-wide. And I know the school board is very aware of this, but just to keep it in perspective, with the amount of students we have, the amount of staff that we have, we're servicing over 3,000 people every day with a team of five infrastructure. When you compare that to the city staff, they have around, I think, Mr. Kimball, general government, probably about eight, a team of eight. And they're an organization that is much smaller than we are, so they really are a dynamic team. We have an instructional team of four people. That's somebody that's based at all of our buildings except Thackeray, and we float over because it's so small and help there. And then there's an instructional support team of two people, one at TJ, and one is based at MEH, can float over to GM if they need to. And that's printer assistance and things like that. And TJ is our largest building this year. When you look at what's included in infrastructure, hardware, software, services, when you look at technology expense, all of these things are part of that. Server switches, routers, these things are used basically to help the division function in every aspect, from food service, from our media center, from our financial system. Pretty much everything we do is automated. Our internet service provider, we have to pay for that. Device management software, making sure we keep our kids safe and secure, and our staff. Looking at our insurance, making sure we have hacking security, device replacement and repair. And then our photocopyers are also technology. Functions and services supported, and this just kind of gives you a general idea how everything runs through technology. All of our telephones, our voice-over IP, that changed two years ago, Mr. Kimball. We got off of the old one. Security cameras. We have so many security cameras, and this has been a big focus for us in the last, I'd say, three to four years, where we continue to increase the safety aspect and the monitoring. Our fire alarms, all of our fire alarms rely on technology. All of our card readers, a lot of school divisions don't have card readers on their door. We feel like it's very important that it makes us safer, and we are controlling who is having access to our building when we have those locked doors. All of our emergency radios rely on technology. Our HVAC controls, the only HVAC controls that don't, if you're in a, like Mason, obviously, in really old sections of the building, but all of that is automated. And then we also have the wide variety of functions. Student testing, which is a requirement for us, Power School required for us. We have a lot of state reporting that we do. Our analytics, and again, payroll, food service, transportation is automated. Human resources, it's how people will know to apply for the superintendent's job, if they look at the website. Emergency communication tools and resources. And again, it's just to give you the big picture view. It touches everything that we do. The teaching and learning tools, this is pretty much a package, I would say, of what you find out in most schools. The teachers generally have a laptop. There are some iPads out in the buildings. The ones we have right now are first and second generation. They're pretty old. But a desktop of some sort, whether that is a Dell desktop, or it's a second laptop. Smart boards are in a lot of our classrooms if the teachers have wanted them. We've made sure that we've provided those. Document cameras are especially, I would say, more so at elementary, quite a few at secondary. Document cameras, printers, and projectors. And this is kind of what you consider your classroom package that you find in most classrooms. We do have certain rooms that need particular equipment based off of the needs of a department. And science, for instance, in high school, they use a lot of probe ware, and they have some devices that are a little bit different. Our math department at high school has a particular slate that they use. That's a unique slate that is a request of the department that we provide for them. When you look at our total technology spending on people, infrastructure, teaching and learning, all of those components, you can see that the spending is that 4.7%. That's that blue part of the pie graph. And then when you look at what we spend annually on student and teacher devices, you want to look at the tech spending of that 4.7%, and how is the bulk of that broken down? And you can see on that left-hand side, we have the device lease, which is $370,400. And that's the number that we're really talking about, and the school board charged us to look at that number in the budget. People, again, it's like every aspect of the school division, is our largest driver for technology as well. It's the people that run everything. And then the other infrastructure, from servers that need replacement or management of our devices. So when you look at the pie graph, that device lease is a section you don't see very much, because it is actually a very small part of the tech budget. And the one thing that I think there's a lot of, and this is why one of the school board members asked that I present this tonight, is there is still a lot of misunderstanding about what it means to lease. It's not like a lease where you, at the end, have a balloon payment like you might on a car or something like that. Basically, what it means to lease is that we get all of our hardware upfront. So from day one, when you sign your lease, if you need 1,400 devices for 1,400 students, you get all 1,400. And you basically are allowed to pay for those over three or four years, and spread that out. And so what it does is it avoids what you see in some school districts. And matter of fact, our neighboring district right now is struggling a little bit with this, where you roll devices out because you can only afford so much. And you have ninth graders and 10th graders who have devices, and 11th and 12th graders who don't, and they're all sitting in the same class, and it is not equitable. And I've had some really great discussions with the neighboring district that it has rolled out that way. Had they leased, all of their high school students would have had their equipment up front. They would have equity and access like we do at Mason. It also allows standardization across the school division. That's something that we also didn't have before. We were very site-based in that it was very difficult for us to manage for efficiency when you have different types of devices rolling out everywhere, especially with a small tech team. It also allows us to get the lowest price, where if I went and we bought, over three years, we went and bought 400, and then we bought 400, and then we bought 400, we would be paying more than what we pay to go ahead and balk price all 1,200. That's how your pricing gets lower. And we do have that three-year, which is also constant, which Mr. Kimball and I love in the budget. It used to be very erratic, where they would just say, oh, we need XYZ in a building. So your tech budget was more difficult to know where the spending needed to be. So it's really helped us on the budgeting side. And then at the end of the three years, you've just paid for those devices over three years, which is where we are right now. We own that equipment. And what they do for the leasing to close out the lease, if you have 1,200 devices, you pay a dollar per unit, which is $1,012. It's literally $1,200. And that just closes your lease out. And so the devices that we have, we own. Now, you have an option to be able to sell those devices back if you want to. Go ahead, Lisa. When you look at the lease model, what we do in Falls Church is very economical, because our devices, we count on keeping them six years. And we know the device that we have has a very long life, if you even look at Consumer Reports and how it's rated. They're very durable devices, and they can last six years so that we don't have to buy any new devices in our elementary level. And we do have to have, again, devices, just for state mandated, testing alone. It's a very cost-efficient model, so we're getting long life out of our units. And it also keeps the most up-to-date tools with our high school, middle school students, who are needing longer battery life, the newer machines, newer things that are coming out on the market for our students. When you look at the historical spending as a part of the operating budget, a lot of people think we're spending a ton more on technology than we used to. The reality is we're spending more efficiently than what we used to, and we are trying to make sure that we are staying with that same kind of mindset of the portion of the budget that we do spend. And when you look at that two middle years, 2012, '13, '14, that 12 and '13 year, we had an infusion of about half a million dollars that summer that city council, general government actually gave us when we had a surplus in the city. So that helped us spike a little bit, get us back on track. And then that next year, we were still building a little bit of our infrastructure. We had let our infrastructure really fall behind. We didn't have wireless, except very few areas in our high school. And at that time, we had about 35 laptops. So what you'll see is even this year in '16, '17, where that's gone down again. And again, the percentage has not changed over time. We're just spending much more efficiently, buying in bulk, and trying to be smarter about how we spend our dollars. This is another question that, yeah, I've got about three more that I was asked to address. Why not bring your own device? And primarily, these are some issues that come from our teachers. And our teachers overwhelmingly will tell you that bring your own device, from a teacher standpoint, and Margaret could probably jump in on this one, is difficult. To have 24 students show up with 24 different devices, and to think that you're going to be able to troubleshoot and know what's on their device to plan a lesson, you're asking a tremendous amount from a teacher. The device inequity was one reason the school board initially did not go in this direction. They felt like if it was important enough to invest in technology, that it was important enough to invest for all students. Also, the increased risk of theft. Right now, we insure our devices, so if our students are out at the bus stop, or they're at a ballgame, and that device is stolen, we have to file a police report that it's stolen. That keeps everybody honest, and we do that. And then we get replacement on that device. Also, there's no technical support from peers or teachers or IT. Again, it's impossible to ask people to be troubleshooting a Dell laptop, and a Surface, and a Google Chromebook, and for a teacher to be able to know what they have in the classroom to plan for. They also, we have difficulty when students own their devices, being able to push out the programs, because we don't control their device. That's their personal device. And so also restricting, unneeded or distracting programs. We have a blacklist and a whitelist, and it's different by every grade level and by every developmental level. So at high school, if we need to blacklist a new game that comes on the market, and we see our kids are starting to have too much fun, we can blacklist that. And then the other thing that I was asked to address briefly was just mobile device selection. The committee has really looked at two different devices this year, and we felt like we needed to look carefully at Chromebook versus the MacBook Air, which is what we currently have. They're two totally different devices. Chromebook is solely a web machine, so you're getting your apps online. It is a web-based machine. It's very different than the MacBook Air, which is a laptop. And originally, when we went with MacBook Air, we did evaluate Surface. We looked at iPad. As a matter of fact, our high school team actually thought they wanted iPads at first. And then they went away from it after they actually had their demo and their trial for almost about six months. The Dell laptops, we had probably more Dell in this district than anything else. When we trialed the Dells, they were very heavy. They were bulky. They didn't really have a good student machine at the time. Fujitsu was something they were using in Charlottesville, so we had piloted that. And again, staff found it bulky and didn't like it for that tablet. We would not go back and just look for a laptop that costs the same amount of money and just switch because we want to switch, because that's a huge learning curve for our teachers. And our teachers have been very vocal about that. They have spent, they're in their sixth year, really, of training and learning a device, and their lessons are built around GarageBand and lots of tools that come on the Mac, the accessibility. They understand how to get the vocabulary for a student who's an ESOL student. They understand how to teach them those skills. So what they're really looking at, again, were these two devices, Chromebook and Mac Air. We piloted two more Chromebooks. It may be something that in the next leasing cycle, maybe teachers will feel differently as things move to the web, but there are lots of concerns on the infrastructure and from the teacher side. Infrastructure, it's a different operating system. So we would be adding a whole nother operating system, and we're not sure. The work that we were doing five years ago on safety and security would be starting all over again. Our teachers feel like we would have to find subscription apps that do the same thing. When you buy the MacBook, it's already on the hard drive, so you own those. And subscriptions right now are the thing that are killing a lot of schools, because they're so expensive on an annual basis, and especially in a growing school district, because you have to keep increasing your subscriptions. So that just gives you an idea what they've looked at on the committee. And again, they've really moved more on to the teaching and learning. But the one takeaway is in a leasing structure, as you go into the budget, the devices that we purchase, we expect to last six years. And Mr. Kimball and I have been looking at a seven-year, actually, just to help with the budget. So that's just a quick overview of one piece and one slice that they looked at.
Thank you. Any questions? Just a couple of questions. In terms of projected, the spending history, were those dollar figures adjusted for inflation, or are those just actual dollars?
They're actual dollars, the percentage of the best, yeah.
Okay. In terms of, we still have some desktops, is that right?
Actually, most of us have, all of central offices desk, most of our teacher units. That came up at peak today. Most of our teachers have desktops, except for the newer section of TJ. We actually went with a laptop on the desk and then a portable laptop, but the teachers haven't really liked that. So I would assume that the next request will be to stay with desktops. They're shaking their head back there. Yeah. But we still have Dell desktops are what we utilize around the school division.
And do those come in under other infrastructure?
Yeah.
And in terms of, so with this crop of things coming off lease that we now own, are we going to insure those the same way that we've been insuring them under the lease? Or how will we deal with wear and tear and breakage?
Yeah. And again, that's kind of one of those efficiency things. We don't insure our elementary, and because the rate of failure, number one, on the machines for just the machine itself is extremely low with these devices. And our kids don't carry them all around the school, so you have very, very little breakage at all at the elementary level. Most of the high school is usually when they accidentally drop them, or they put their heavy books on them. So the only devices that have that kind of insurance are the newest devices.
Okay.
Yeah. Do I? Yeah, yeah.
And then we can do some repairs in-house, is that correct?
We can, actually. They've been trained on how to repair the devices, so they can do a certain portion of repairs.
Okay. And then the last point, could you talk about the facilities payoff from the devices in terms of computer lab space freed up?
Yeah, I actually did have a slide in here the night I presented. Oh, it is on here, actually. If you look at that historical spending slide, and you look at 14, 15, we were able to free up, which was really important for us, at least eight classrooms. And what we calculated was 23 seats, because early childhood's 22, upper is 24. So basically, we've been able to find about 184 seats or eight classrooms. And when you think about that, it's a tremendous savings for us capital-wise. It is the only thing keeping our head above water right now at GM and MEH as far as space, once we broke all those labs down and regaining that space for students and for teachers.
Okay. Well, thank you, Dr. Jones. If there are no other questions, we will, this is, we're getting into some issues that will be with us for some time, such as the draft CIP.
What's next?
I believe, yes.
I have the draft CIP for you tonight. Of course, it says draft, because I know the school board, I think, is going to want a whole work session at least, and probably more than that. But as a reminder, the city asks for the CIP information in December.
General government?
General government, thank you. It's very early every year. It's very early every year, and so we've done a lot of thinking on the facility, but it's just the need keeps growing because we keep enrolling students. So I do want to just kind of walk you through just a little bit. Pages two and three on this are really no different than what we had last year, where it shows you the design build for each building and where we are, the process.
Dr. Jones, would there be a way we could put this up?
I was just thinking, Lisa, could you guys open that back up again for the CIP? I'm sorry. I was...
Double.
Yeah. Okay. So this is just an overview, overview of that 11-year master plan, and kind of where the school board is on the various facilities. On that next page, what you're looking at is the design build occupy process that we use that is in policy. The step one is way over there on the left. Where we are right now, Mount Daniel, for instance, is step four and step five, where our ASAC committee actually gets engaged and starts weighing in on everything from, you know, the color of the tile to, well, everything imaginable in the building. And right now, when we get our new site plan update, that ASAC process will kick up again. But again, this shows the process the school board uses to build its facilities, and it is very inclusive. ASAC is a large committee with community teachers. On the project funding, this is just that general funding sheet that goes in every year. George Mason has been in here for several years, and you'll notice that that's plugged in, as well as, last year was the football soccer, the track, which was completed, and then also the planning funds. We had that to get through the George Mason project last year. And then you'll also see in FY '17, that came in was like transportation funding, and then also land acquisition. When you go to the next page and looking at all of the different projects, the project conformity with the comprehensive plan of the city, this is a requirement in the CIP, doesn't change for the most part every year, because it's very philosophical in nature about why we want great schools and facilities for our children. When you look on page seven, this is actually showing you the building capacity timeline. And the one thing that I would point out on here is, we've tried to adjust down on the bottom, just to show you with MEH, when the original 600-seat capacity has increased because of the conversion of our computer labs, but we haven't had any increase in service areas. And it's important to note that, because we can keep pushing children in our buildings and, you know, put more little bodies in halls and everywhere else you can turn into space, but it doesn't help all of those other pressure points, like having enough restrooms and having a big enough cafeteria so kids don't start eating at, you know, 10:30 in the morning. And then you'll see that again at Mason. The original capacity, the actual capacity was 778. And again, we've converted those computer labs by breaking them down to gain additional seats at the high school, which has been very helpful for us. But again, there's no increase in those service areas, and that's why you'll hear our high school students talk about how crowded the halls are starting to feel, and having enough bathrooms in certain areas, and then also cafeterias start getting really full. And Mason, when Mason had just above 900, I think maybe 920, Mr. Kimball, I'm not sure the largest it was, so we had eight through 12, back in 2011, 12, maybe about 920. Anyway, was it higher than that? But you've got to keep in mind, we still had six trailers outside. So those six trailers took pressure off of the halls, because you had, you know, over 100 students who were outside taking classes. But again, the cafeteria is where we're really going to fill it. Behind that, what you'll find is, there is a chart for every school. This was new for us last year, just trying to show the enrollment and when you hit those available seats. And if you look at that over there on the right, the blue shows how many available seats there are, like at preschool, and the orange is the enrollment. Now, Jesse Thackery's our building that's unique, because we do somewhat control the enrollment, in that we must by law enroll our special needs children. We choose, as a school system, to enroll our at-risk children, that would be our ESOL students, economically disadvantaged. And then we fill the rest of those spots in order to have balanced classes, which we are also supposed to have by federal and state law, we are, or regulations, we are supposed to have those. Those are our tuition students. And what will happen eventually is, our classes probably will not be in balance again, because until we opened Jesse Thackery, we had not had balanced preschool classes. And we got kind of a negative on our report every year for that, because we were not providing the instructional environment that we should have been, according to federal guidelines. Behind that, what you'll see, that's new this year, and we started this last year, but is a separate and not as part of the CIP, is your facilities equipment and end-of-life. And it just gives you an idea of what's in the building, what is the base cost. And I emphasize base cost, because when you see something like HVAC, you're not seeing the installation aspect, you know, or a boiler, but it's giving you some really good overview information of when things were installed. So of course, Jesse Thackery is in a great, you know, position, because it's one of our newest facilities. Behind that is Mount Daniel with K1. And I think the scariest thing about K1, it's, again, it has to do with our growth. We have a hard cap of 660 in that building, and you can see where we actually start to hit that cap and peak above that. And so it's, that's going to be something we are going to have to really, really watch, because the cap will come fairly quickly. And then behind that, what you're seeing is, if there was enrollment with a one-grade level solution like kindergarten, it shows you what a one-grade level solution, which the school board has talked quite a bit about, shows you how that actually helps you as far as pulling a grade level out, if you decided to do something like that. And then you're looking at what happens to Mount Daniel with enrollment with grades one and two only. So you can actually look at what that one-grade level solution does in the terms of seats in the school. Behind that is the, and there's not an end-of-life there, because so much of that equipment will be new. So we didn't feel like that was a good use of Seve's time. In grades two through five, you can look at TJ. And again, this is a, we just, it's enrollment growth for our kids. So we are really topped out there and filling it. And you'll see where the building capacity is, and we're already above that line right now in those first two years. And that's where the actual building, and then we added those trailers in order to help us with the enrollment pressures. And when we pull one-grade level out, you'll see it gives you a few more years to breathe, where it comes under the line, that orange drops down underneath. During that time period, that's when a one-grade level solution or something has to be taking place. Otherwise, we are going to be struggling again, trying to find space. And that, you can see where the trailers are still there. Behind that, you're looking at the end-of-life ideas, I mean, for TJ. And most of TJ, again, is in great shape, because it's a newer facility. So you can see the install dates on those things. Behind that, you can see the, things like the generator, the electrical. When you look at the electrical, you'll see that that's the one that's in red. That's the older section of the building, where there's still some old wiring and things of that nature. So that's the one area in TJ you could spend $20,000 just to upgrade some of that.
Michael.
I have a quick question. While you're running through these, these anticipated replacement costs, are they in today's dollars, or are they in 2027 dollars?
Nope, they are not inflated, they are today. So if you're saying that we're going to be, and you'll see a chart in the back where it kind of does a little bit of that, you're going, it increases every year. And now, I will say HVAC is an interesting one, where, you know, we had cost savings on our HVAC, and part of that is, as technology changes, sometimes it does drop the price. So some of these items, it really depends on what's happening in the market and what's the newest device. So HVAC is one of those where there is a solution that's a little bit cheaper now, but it doesn't mean that's necessarily what you want to do. It depends if you're worried about the life of the units more than the cost of the units.
We would have to project these numbers out for inflation.
Yes, you'd have to project them out. And they are round numbers, but Seve did all of these based off of real, you know, real numbers and experience that he has. Behind that are the Mary Ellen Henderson numbers, and again, you'll see where you're looking at that capacity line, what the building capacity is there. And again, that's because we've broken down those labs, it's, it's holding our head above water. It's really helped us in that regard. Then when you look at, MEH to me is a building that is, I'm going to say to me, it's just a little scary, because we think of it as a really new facility. You know, it is, and it is. It's beautiful, it's hearty, but are you going to allow MEH to look like Mason, you know, in two more decades? Or are we actually going to try to keep up with the facilities and the life? Because when you look at that second column from the right, the anticipated replacement year, look at the ones that are 2017 and 2019. The one that stood out to me are the rooftop units. Seve pointed this out, and it's $1.2 million to come in and replace just the rooftop units at MEH. And the anticipated replacement year should be 2019. That's not anywhere in our CIP budget. So I just, I point that out, because it is, doesn't mean they'll die in 2019, they're probably not. But it's just, you know, if you're going to be on a cycle, it's being aware that MEH is some of these end-of-life. And the end-of-life, by the way, actually come from, it's a chart that is put out that's national, that Brian and Seve use to, when they say end-of-life, that's how they calculate the average life expectancy. And behind that, on page 19, is the George Mason building. And again, I think everybody knows what's happening in George Mason, and it's a little bit of a struggle as well. And again, if we didn't have, if we didn't have at least that lab space right now, we would, we would really be struggling. We would already be, I don't know what we would be doing right now, we'd be getting new trailers, I guess, really. Behind that is the end-of-life for Mason, and again, you'll see a lot of red on Mason's, looking at some of the RT units and all of the different, the boilers, you know, that's an interesting thing, when you look at the boilers. And the one like in red should have been replaced in, you know, between 1976 and 1981. That's a little old, and a little. And one, this is probably one of the prime examples where I just want to point out again, that anticipated replacement cost, that is just the boiler. And I think, I know the school board noticed this last year, when Seve and I were working and talking about one of the boilers that was out, and what we were going to do financially, when you really get into replacing a boiler, the installation can cost twice as much as the boiler, because where our boilers are, you have to literally knock the wall out of the high school, and to get the boiler out, to get a new boiler in, and then rebuild the wall. So it's not, you know, not having installation on here, it's kind of a false positive, even though it's a half a million dollars. So lots of red on here.
Well, Dr. Jones, could you go back, oh, you, so the anticipated cost for full HVAC, does that, all those numbers there don't add up to 12 million, or do they feed into that?
These are just different rooftop units. It's not like the whole, he's just giving you the actual rooftop units that are seven, and what those units cost. You'll see, when you get to the very back, what the quote is for the whole HVAC system, which is ductwork, and actually, the quote that's in here, you've got a low and a high, and it ranges between 6 and 12 million to do everything. This is just a unit fails, I want to come in, replace one unit, you know, how am I going to replace that unit? So it's very bare minimum, and like right now, we already know the concrete under the unit is failing. So when you go to move the unit, now you've got to go in and fix the concrete, and the roof underneath the concrete is also failing. So there's just lots of issues there. But you've got real, real numbers, real end-of-life numbers, and we are getting an updated HVAC quote, so who knows, maybe it'll go down. You know, like I say, it did at TJ, maybe we'll be fortunate at Mason that we'll get a better estimate.
Okay.
And behind that, again, you're just looking at the installation year and the years of service for the roof. And one of the challenges is the older decaying roof that's underneath the current roof, and then all of the flashing joints are in need of replacement. And I know Seve's talked to you about that. And the roof has been in service for 23 years. That's, you know, it's time for it to have a new roof. That's why we have so many problems with the leaks. And then again, you kind of just keep on going, and I won't read any more of these, you can kind of read them yourself, but it just keeps going at Mason. Everything's old.
And it's at full capacity as well?
Right, that's correct. Behind that, you just have central office, and this is talking about how the central office functions are at 800 West Broad. You know, the long-term goal is obviously to get central office, where we're not paying rent. I think a lot of people don't realize that we do pay over $300,000 annually for rent. And when we moved in there, it was very much needed, but long-term, it would be much more cost-effective to get central office back, like at the GM campus, as part of this project.
And when does the lease expire?
Oh, Mr. Kimball?
2021.
Future expansion planning, again, this is just looking at, you know, what the future is. Behind that, these are all impact costs. What does it cost to open Thackery? You know, what is the estimated utility increase at Mount Daniel? And again, these are just some real big overview kind of numbers. A lot of people will say, where does the GM number come from? The original number, and this doesn't mean it matches the program exactly as we have it today. The original number that's been in the CIP was, based on 275,000, 700 square feet, at 350. And it was 350, because that was, this is one number that was escalation cost, and that was a recommended number for us, so we haven't topped out of that. So right now, we actually have, I think, more square footage in the program than 275. Behind that, you're looking at the addendums on page 27. This is just talking about what the new construction cost is, what the Mary Ellen expansion number is, and then furniture, fixture, and equipment. A lot of people don't understand what that 7 million is. And you can't open brand-new construction, or even renovated construction, and then go and put our furniture, that's also falling apart. That's, some of it's really, really old. Behind that, you're looking at the addendum two, and this is one, I hope that you'll get the updated numbers, maybe even before I leave in the next week, but if not, it'll be coming. The GM HVAC, the low cost was 6.5 million, the top is 12. What needs to happen, if the building was actually going to be renovated and expanded, you would want to rip out all of the ceilings, all of the ductwork, and replace all of that. And that's where you start getting to that 12 million. It's a big building, it's an entire summer project, it's, it was challenging for us. It took all summer just to do TJ last summer, and you think how small it is, so the team of people it takes to put in HVAC in a building the size of Mason, and it's a whole summer project. And then the partial roof, we had the million-dollar quote, that one is from 2014, so we know that we're going to see escalation there. And that was just to come in and patch fix, but that hasn't worked well for us. And we're trying to get an actual estimate, just to rip the whole roof off, what will it cost, so that the school board will at least have that number. And we're still waiting on those numbers. It's hard to get people to give you a good, a hard estimate when they're not really, they know you're not really doing the work today, you know, because somebody has to sit down to do those estimation numbers. Now, behind that is the last one, is looking at kind of capital projects and planning in five years, and possible projects. And this is part of that whole work session discussion, is, when you look at the year on that left-hand side, of course, we have Mount Daniel, which is new construction, that 15.6 is already bond-funded, but everything below that is not. So if you look at 1718, you're talking about a grade-level solution, you know, you have to either acquire property, or we're going to have to be able to find property somewhere, like with the school board modeled at Madison, which would, you know, reduce that 4 million. But right now, property acquisition's going to be at least 4 million, if you're going to acquire a site. George Mason is going to need, unless the school board and general government are able to be aggressive on the timeline, you're going to have to put some trailers back in there. So this is just to give you a cost, what did it cost for the trailers that we put in at TJ? And that 700,000 is a six rooms, and it actually has the hallway, so they are more secure. That's one thing Seve feels, if they put in trailers, even at the high school, that having all of those doors open to the outside is not very safe for our kids. And it does contain their restrooms also. Our kids used to have to run from the trailer inside the building just to go to the restroom, and in the winter, that's really challenging. The grade-level construction, and I know the first number we looked at was about 10 million, when you just base it on square footage, and that is just a number, it's just a placeholder of 12 million, because it depends, is it a one-grade level or two-grade level? Could be lower, could be higher, just to take care of a grade level. George Mason, if you wanted to come in and do the HVAC, and that's why you see a little asterisk over there on the left. Again, right now, the new quote is pending, but 6 to 12 million to do the HVAC. The roof, if we wanted, okay, we're going to come in and just do the roof, so that the kids don't have ceiling tiles falling on their head. It's between a 1 million and 5 million, and again, we're hoping to have a hard quote for you in that. And then the next thing is MEH, it's also going to be at capacity. So you're going to have to think about, which we haven't had there before, depending on the aggressive timeline of the project, trailers for MEH.
Where would we even put them?
You probably would either have to be out where the practice field is, it could be in a parking lot area, and you reconfigure the buses, and utilize that whole malt area differently. There is space there, but because they haven't had them before, it'll be a little bit more expensive, because you have to run all your utilities, which will be new, where at least we have some existing outdoor utilities at Mason, so. And then on the bottom, you have the boiler replacement, and this is just an emergency funding placeholder, because you know we were dealing with this last year, you know? So if that boiler, they had not been able to get that thing going again, you know, had not been able to get that thing going again, you know, Sevy and I were really thinking it could be a half million dollars by the time we bought the boiler, blew the wall out, rebuilt the construction. So when you look down on the bottom, and to me, it is kind of scary, but it's the reality of where we are, you can look at all of that included, then take out Mount Daniel, because it's already been bond-funded. So if you just go with the numbers that are on the low range, like the lowest quote for HVAC, lowest quote for the roof, you still need just under 20 million dollars just to do those things. And if you go with the high quote, and you say, okay, we really are going to keep this building, and we're going to be, you know, problem-solving this building for another decade, and you're going to go in and really, you know, replace the HVAC if that number does come in at 12. And again, you hope it doesn't when we get a new quote. But that would be 36 million dollars just to do what's on that page. And this is something the school board had been asking, really, I think, us to do and to look at, was what are the real numbers for the projects that we have that are not in the CIP. The only thing on here that is in the CIP right now is the property acquisition, which is the second one, other than, of course, Mount Daniel.
So the, the George Mason trailers, how many students could six rooms serve? If you have six trailers, how much capacity, because I'm just, I'm just looking, I'm just looking at...
It's, it would be, it would be 120-plus, and you know, and I hate to say 24, because our, our classes are so different, but it'd be right around 144 is probably the actual number. I would say you would probably calculate 120, really, just because if it happens to be a calculus or something that's out there, it's going to be smaller. But you definitely would get another 120 seats at least.
And the natural, organic growth will exceed that additional capacity, if you look at the Weldon Cooper. So in other words...
Oh, long-term, that's not a long-term solution.
No, that's what I'm saying, is that this, this basically, we're running as fast as we can just to stay in place and maybe lose a little less ground, but this doesn't, this basically just means that the problem isn't getting as bad as it could be getting, correct?
That's correct.
I mean, as I look, I'm just looking at last meeting's Weldon Cooper numbers, and that, that addition of trailers for George Mason and Mary Ellen Henderson will not keep up with the organic growth by the time they're finished.
No, because, and again, you go back to, and the six rooms is pretty easy to visualize just because that building has had over 900 students in it, and it was packed when it had, and it had six trailers. So basically, all we've done is the six trailers we lost to mold, you're replacing those six trailers, and you know, when you start getting into the 900s, you've got its pressure. And that doesn't, again, take care of cafeteria and restrooms and those other spaces that you really should be expanding, and 21st century learning, you know. But it doesn't mean you can't have 21st century learning, it just means you're, the STEM labs and STEAM labs and things that you want for kids are, you're going to have to create them in existing space, which is tough to do.
Okay. Any, any other questions? Okay. Sorry, Ms. Rankuma?
I said, I'll let you.
Yes, it looks like we're going to need a bigger boat, as they said in Jaws.
It's not meant to be depressing, but it is the reality of where we are, you know.
Yeah, okay. Let, let me... Back to our current meeting, all right. Now we come to item 8.06, the FY17 Budget Status Report and the Fund Transfer Request.
And we really need Hunter for this one.
Yeah, I was going to say, he picked a fine time.
Let's see here.
We'll give him a moment here. All right, Mr. Campbell, you're on for Budget Status Report and Fund Transfer Request.
Sure thing. Have provided the Board with a Budget Status Report for the School Operating Budget through the end of October, so it'd be the first four months of our fiscal year. In terms of revenue, couple of areas where we're either under or above budget. Sales tax at this point is not coming in as was projected by the General Assembly, so that is an area of deficit in revenue. On the other hand, given our additional enrollments, we do expect some more state funding in terms of basic aid. Did receive word last week that the money that the state had included in the budget for teacher salary improvements that we had been banking on, we're not going to receive that money. That was about $37,000 for us. But in terms of revenue, we're, it looks like we're going to be short about $316,000. On the spending side, it looks like we will be to the good about $406,000. And as, as you can, so, so the net impact would be a projected ending position of approximately $90,000 as of the end of October. And as you can see within the, in the spending categories, some of, some of the categories are showing projected surpluses, some of them are showing projected deficits, and this, this was dependent on a number of factors. One, you know, where the new hires came in, we had a lot of staff turnover during the summer and the fall. A number of items came up that were student-related, especially having to do with Arlington Career Center tuition, you know, additional students, we have more IB tuition, there's some special ed tuition in there too, you know, some plumbing items at, at Mary Ellen Henderson that were not covered by insurance. Therefore, I have also attached a proposed fund transfer, which would basically move funds between and among the various categories and accounts to, to put them all in, in the black, given the projection as of the end of October, and then have provided a second Budget Report, which would show what the school operating budget would look like once those, those transfers had been made, and that all the categories now show positive balances and would be in the black. So I would request that the Board approve the fund transfer request that was included as part of the memo.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Any questions for Mr. Campbell? One question, purchase services on the financial, on the financial report shows a big variance.
Yes.
What is that?
That is specifically, it was the Mary Ellen Henderson plumbing repairs that I had mentioned, Arlington Career Center tuition. We have over 60 high school students who are now taking advantage of the programs over at the Arlington Career Center, and we had budgeted, I think, for like 46 to 48. There's some special ed tuition in there as well. The superintendent search expenses are reflected there as, as well.
And the contingency, it looks as if we have about 108 left in the tank?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, that's, that's good news. One last question, the other transfers and reserves.
Yes.
What's, what's going on there?
The, the story there is, and you'll, that sort of, that ties with the, under the revenue, the other funding category under, under revenue. We do budget a placeholder in, in the event that grant monies or potentially large gifts are made during the course of the year, that would allow us then to accept those monies within our authorized appropriation. And then what we do is, on the spending side, we don't plug them in for specific items, but simply hold a reserve in the event that, that, that funding comes in.
Okay, just a couple of other questions. I have heard it said in the past, and I don't think it's, I think it can be explained in a way that takes away any negative implications, but the fact that the salaries and wages have a variance of $325,000, is that an abnormal delta? I mean, I, I've, I've heard criticism that, why in the world can't you keep track of, of personnel? Maybe you could explain what's behind that.
Surely. And actually, Dr. Jones had the, had the exact same question, so she, she really prepped me for this. In terms of budgeting, we actually, you know, when preparing the budget, budget for the staff that we are aware of, you know, going into the winter, in terms of staff retirements and turnover, Ms. Hi and I work together very closely, and generally will program in to know, if a staff member is not planning on returning, then I will go ahead and plug a vacancy in at the, the average teacher salary, the average hire, which is an MA 30 step nine. And actually, I went back and checked this year, and our average new hire on the teacher was an MA 30 step nine. So that, that has been holding true. This is the third year that that, that's been holding true. I think what, what has happened here is, you know, a couple of things. There was a large staff turnover during the summer after the budget had been passed. And in this particular case, there were higher, higher staff teachers who were on, on the higher end of the scale, being replaced with teachers on, on the lower end of the scale. And there have been years where it's just, just has been, actually been the opposite, where lower-paid teachers have left, and then teachers with, you know, with master's degrees or master's plus 30s with, you know, 15 years of experience have come in. Also, given the fact that there are retirements taking place this year, there was a resignation of our attorney this year, our technology director's retiring, that's, that's all factored into here as well.
Okay, and then one last question. The, in terms of the comparison of the variance from budget between the school system and general government, any comparisons to draw there that you, that you know of? In other words, this is...
Not, not, not really that, that I know of.
This looks pretty close to me. I mean, we're, we're off by $90,000, which is, you know, a fraction of a percentage.
Correct.
So I think that's pretty good. So keep up the good work.
Thank you, sir.
All right, any other questions? All right. I would entertain a motion with respect to Mr. Campbell's operating fund transfer request.
Chair, move that the Falls Church Public School Board approve the attached FY17 operating fund transfer. Is that what we're looking at?
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or abstaining? All right, very well. I would welcome Mr. Kiran Sharp for coming in at this late hour, welcome. Usually the flow goes the other way as the, as the hour advances, but it's good to see you. Next, we come to the FY17 Budget Amendment to the Capital Improvement Budget.
Yes, actually, there are, there are two separate budget amendments. The first is really more of a housekeeping issue, as I like to call it, of, which concerns the operating budget. In this year, we have, this fiscal year, we've entered into a number of leases and lease purchases specifically for two school buses. Rather than purchasing them outright, we're lease purchasing them. And also, we are, have entered into two new leases for photocopy or replacements at the elementary schools. According to GASB, Government Accounting Standards Board, the, the proper way to account for this is to show the value of the asset and book it the year that the asset is, is received by the organization, even though we pay for it over many years. And I failed to do this when putting, putting the budget together, but I've been working with Melissa Ryman over with the general government and request that the, and she had, she's been working with the city council on the same thing in terms of putting ordinances together to, basically, to increase the operating budget revenue by $221,356. And on the expenditure side, that would, that would make room, therefore, to book the, the actual value of those capital items. The net impact to the operating budget would be, would be zero, but for accounting purposes, it's, it's a necessity.
Okay, and is there a second?
Oh, and the, the other, the other item is a proposed amendment to the, to the current year capital budget. Good news that the Jesse Thackeray preschool project did end with a positive balance of slightly over $14,000, $14,353. That's bonded money, and it reaches the end of its life next month in December. And there's also, as Dr. Jones mentioned earlier this evening, the TJ HVAC project came in under budget as well, and we anticipate that ending with a significant positive balance. So the, the request before the Board tonight is to move the $14,353 from the Jesse Thackeray project, $200,000 from the TJ HVAC project into us, an already established capital project, systems replacements, that is, that's bond-funded. And therefore, this would allow us to, to use those funds to replace the three failed HVAC units on the roof of the auditorium at George Mason High School.
So people could actually sit up in the back party.
Yes.
All right. Any questions? I would, Mr. Lawrence?
Just one, Hunter.
Yes.
I think you've answered it. Do we have the same document attached to 8.07 and 8.08?
Yes. It is, it is, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because the first one is talking about the operating, and the second one's talking about the CIP.
Yes. And the, the reason being, and I, I did it to confuse you, Mr. Lawrence, I really did. Given Board docs, we, I could have put these two things into one motion, but I felt it would probably be clearer and more transparent to break it down into two motions, one for the operating budget, one for the capital budget. So I prepared one memo, two motions. Board docs requires two separate items for separate motions.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Is that right?
Okay.
All right, would anybody care to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Falls Church Public School Board amend the 2016, 2017 School Operating Fund Budget by increasing revenues and expenditures by $221,356, which requires no additional city appropriation.
I have a second.
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Right. Next, we come to item eight, 8.08, the FY17 Budget Amendment to the Capital Improvement Budget. Does anybody would care to make a motion on that? So this is our second motion, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
See, before I make a motion, I just want to point out that this represents us spending savings that we have on projects. So this is not new money, just like the other one as well. Mr. Chairman, I move that the Falls Church Public School Board request an amendment to the Capital Improvement Budget by reallocating $14,353 of bond proceeds remaining from the Thackeray preschool project, ED 008, and $200,000 of bond proceeds from the Thomas Jefferson HVAC replacement project, ED 011, into the bond-funded systems replacement slash renewal project, ED 006.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. I have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Rankuma. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or abstaining? All right, thank you. Next on our agenda is the Fiscal Year 18 Budget Guidance.
Very good. Have, both on Board docs, and I've given, provided hard copies for, for the school board members. And Mr. Brett is, is currently hooking up the projector. But by way of introduction, Dr. Jones and I felt that it would be important for the school board to, to understand or know what, what kind of items and issues are currently on the table that we've identified and are looking at in budgeting and putting together the FY18. That's next year's School Operating Budget. Essentially, there are, there are really two, two big categories. The first is student, student enrollment growth, and the second is staff salaries and benefits, of which the VRS increase and health insurance increase are the, are the largest part in terms of those benefits. This is the quote-unquote Campbell model, projection model. It's, it's not the, the Weldon Cooper, although I think we were off by three or four students overall. That being said, the takeaway here is that over the next five years, we're looking at projected student enrollment growth between 3% and 4% a year, and have not factored in the new development over, over by Broad and, Broad and West into this. So the next, next slide, given that this info... Given this information, and trying to see what we would need in the way of classroom teachers, looking at grades K8, to maintain K8 class sizes per current school board policy, we would need to add four additional instructional positions. There is one position we can move from third grade, which is a very, very large class, and we would propose moving that from third to fourth grade. But just to maintain the class sizes shown over on the right-hand side would require four additional classroom teachers. And this does not factor in George Mason, the high school, at all, where we look at class load. In fact, Dr. Jones and I were looking at a way to sort of crack that nut, but not quite there yet. Next, we're currently working with Dr. Jones and Marion King, our student data specialist, as well as the general government staff, to get an updated, much, much better-than-new student housing chart, which shows numbers of students and the type of housing from which they come. At this point, do not have the final chart to provide, however, felt comfortable providing some overall trend data, which shows that over the last 28 years, the percentage of our students coming from single-family detached houses has actually decreased by about 20% from 77% to 58%. Meantime, in terms of increases, the number of students coming from apartments and then our newer mixed-use developments have increased over time. It's just, you know, for your information.
So let me ask you a question about this. What does this tell us?
Well-
Because I'm, and it's an open question.
It is.
It's not a rhetorical question, because I think we're-
If you feel that they will come.
Well, but I also think it's, you know, if this number is falling for single-family houses like that, is that a trend, or is that the trough, and it's going to go back up?
Well, and you are correct, in terms of this, this actually can be deceiving, because the number of students from single-family housing has not dropped. The overall number has continued to grow. It's sort of like how the pie is divided. And, you know, 30 years ago, there were no, you know, there wasn't a mixed-use slice of the pie.
Correct.
And-
And another question, and I would not, it's not a fair question to ask you, is, you know, what percentage of housing had students in them? Because in my experience, when we moved onto Riley Street, we were the one family with children, and now there's probably one or two families without children on that street. And so, you know, given the thousand units of housing, where the houses are worth less than the land, it would seem to me, all things being equal, we're going to see that number climb back up for housing, single-family detached housing. And you don't have to answer that, because we'll find out. But it would be, this is interesting to show there's a wider array of housing stock.
True.
But it'll be interesting to see as we move to the right, where we-
And I'll tell you, the last time we did look at that, what percentage of the single-family homes have students coming from them, it was about 18%.
Yeah.
I just wonder if maybe there's another way we can present this to show that it's not that we have fewer students coming from single-family homes, but rather, we have, we actually have more students, we just have them coming from a wider variety of housing types.
Correct.
And it's a lower relative share, but it's-
Right, so, because, yeah, I think this, well, if you're looking at this quickly and you weren't in this meeting, people may misinterpret it.
Correct.
As saying like, well, look, we're, you know, there aren't as many kids coming from single-family homes.
And I think once we get the official number of single-family detached houses from the general government staff, then we'll be able to put out the chart with the hard numbers in it.
Okay.
Which is really what people focus on the most.
Yeah, because this is instructive sitting here, but I do see it being misinterpreted.
Misinterpreted, yes, and I do that now.
Thank you.
Thank you, oops. But anyway, moving on, next chart, this shows some growth trends. The dark blue line is student enrollment, the growth in student enrollment over the last 10 years. Student enrollment has grown 41%. Our overall spending per student, that's the pinkish-red line, has grown 5% over the last 10 years. And the city transfer, city appropriation per student has grown 4% overall over the last 10 years. And, Mr. Castillo, these are not adjusted for inflation.
Thank you.
Yes.
Took the words right out of my mouth.
So that, you know, they are, they're, again, the next three pages-
So problems are solved.
Yeah, this is, this is information that you've seen before, just in different colors. These are the lists of the leadership team's request items that they've identified as FY18 budget items. The principals, assistant principals, directors, assistant superintendents have flagged these items and, to the best of their ability, categorized them as either mandates, planning factors. And planning factors are really those items that are driven by student numbers, student enrollments, needs and wants. If you go to the end of this list, on the third page, the all-in price tag for every, all the requests is just slightly over $5.4 million, which is the mandates, the planning factors, the needs and the wants. If you look at only the mandates and the student enrollment-driven factors, the planning factors, it's slightly under half, probably about 40% of that $5.4 million. It's about $2.3 million.
Mr. Kimball, I might add too, that as we're working through this, these, there are still things that come up every day.
Yes.
That are not on here, and I think it's important. I'm not sure if we even put the project assistant back in again this year. I think we left it off. We were just in the discussion yesterday that residency is becoming too much for Mr. Kimball or myself to continue to deal with. You know, I usually deal with the parents, and Mr. Kimball is the door knocker, but it's time to get somebody to do residency for us. That's not reflected in here. So there's still a lot of items that aren't even in that number. I just think it's important for you to know that.
Yes.
Oh, that one went back in?
Yes.
Okay. I know the residency one, I don't think is-
The residency one is not in here.
Just talking about that.
Yeah. And I will also, you know, hasten to add that, you know, in terms of what we heard tonight from our employee groups, in terms of their requests for salary improvements, those fall under neither mandates nor planning factors. They really fall under the need category, so that $2.3 million would not include funds for salary improvements.
So, Mr. Kimball, just for the benefit of those watching and attending-
Yes.
Planning factors, when you talk about planning factors, you mean adhering to policy, for example, maintaining class size?
Correct. And planning factors are those items, and they're generally staff, although it could leak over into things like the need for number of school buses, you know, and capital items that are driven by the number of students in our school system. So it would be staff, it would be classroom teachers, it would be guidance counselors, assistant principals, librarians, speech pathologists.
And, I don't want to keep us here all night, but you mentioned buses.
Yes.
We have received periodic queries from the community about the capacity of our buses. Dr. Jones, I don't know if you want, I mean, planning factors means at a certain point you need another bus, right?
Yeah, and with planning factors, I mean, the planning factor pamphlet, not pamphlet, the booklet that we have is all staff. But we watch and work with Nancy on the busing side, based on the number of students and, you know, that we need to run our bus routes. And we are running our buses full and to capacity, so, I mean, we do get complaints every once in a while, where kids don't really like to sit next to, real close to other students, you know? But when you've got two, and if they're little bitty ones, sometimes three in a seat, which is still legal, and you're running full buses, they are feeling that too. But our bus rides are also very short, so overall, we are fine with our transportation right now, but it continues to be a pressure point every year.
And moving on to the next-
Hunter?
I have a quick question.
Sorry.
And I think you sort of answered it before. I noticed on this page where you are looking at class sizes-
Yes.
Actual and projected, and you add, in keeping with policy, you add a teacher for every 25 kids. And then, you don't have anything to do with, like, the additional staff that's eventually required when the enrollment grows, such as, like you just mentioned, speech pathologists, counselors, another music teacher, whatever. Does that all come from the administrators?
The, I'll tell you, our leadership team was actually very good about identifying these pressure points in their buildings, and like, for example, with special ed, with Liz Germer, she was able to come in with numbers and articulate where they're feeling the pressure, where the needs are, where the numbers are growing.
And I might add to that, Hunter, is that in the planning factors in the back, we are very detailed down to the type of student and the type of disability. And so we know that if you have X amount of students who have severe needs, then that teacher can have X amount of students on their caseload. So if you actually look at the planning factors, you'll see the formula, it's a weighted formula, and it's very prescriptive for us. And that keeps us from just deciding where one principal may feel like, oh, I really need another teacher, where another principal might be, we can go one more, we can hang on. It gives us equity across the school division in making sure we're only adding staff when we really need it, and we're all operating under the same frame of thought.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And also, just to point out that, as Lila Wise mentioned during her presentation of the legislative package, she mentioned the VRS rate issue. Just to remind folks that at this point, that would be a fall under the category of a mandate, and if it goes forward as planned in the budget for Falls Church, that one item alone would be close to half a million dollars, about $482,000, just to fully fund the VRS as currently on the table. So that's a very, it's a significant, very, very large item, and we're hoping that it can get spread out as, back to the original plan. You know, I'd mentioned the peak and seek request this evening along the same lines. They're, in terms of salary improvements, to flesh out numbers, to put with the salary improvements, the cost of a step for all three employee groups would be $988,000, close to a million dollars, just for a step increase on the current scales, the current existing scales. A 1% adjustment on the current scales would be approximately $375,000, and that includes not only the salaries, but then the salary-driven benefits like FICA and retirement, group life insurance and workers' comp, and those sorts of things. But just wanted, you'd kind of be aware about the ballpark of the values of those as well. Likewise, in terms of how we would go about funding this, 82% of our operating budget does come from the city of Falls Church, general government in the revenue, and a 1% increase would be approximately $400,000. A 2% increase, which has been bandied about, and I've heard people talking about that, would be slightly under $800,796,400. If you look at the, tilt your head and look at the 6% increase, the man, if the items that we flagged as mandates and student enrollment planning factors were the only items that were to be funded, new items to be funded in this budget, they would require a 6% increase in city transfer to cover just those two categories, the mandates and then the student enrollment planning factors. To put salary improvements on top of that, assuming that a step increase was given, would put us up in like the 9% range.
Just to simplify it even more-
Yes.
The nominal 2-ish percent organic growth rate, if that were, if taxes were held steady, that would not even fund the mandates, as I read it, because the mandates are north of 800.
You are correct.
So-
Right.
So that would mean larger class sizes, no salary, no step, no salary improvements at all.
Right. And, you know, for the sake of full disclosure, but you know, I'm not trying to oversimplify things, we are, again, expecting student enrollment increases of 3% to 4% in, you know, in the coming years. Along with that would come some additional state revenue, although it's only about-
Would not go anywhere near to closing-
Right, no, it's not near the cost of what the student would be.
So, sorry to keep going down rabbit holes, but this, these numbers that you're talking about here are predicated, for example, with the planning factors, on a 3-ish to 4-ish percent enrollment rise?
They are, sir.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, and if we were to be hit with, you know, the nearly 6% that we were hit with this year, it would require, you know, additional staff to meet the needs. Special ed, because proportionally, special ed students increase along with the general population.
I can add one thing to, I think when Hunter and I were putting this together, we, just to clarify too, that this is by no means a recommendation, you know, just the 1%, 2% are numbers that we have, we wanted to run, because we always talk about 1%, 2%. If I were putting the superintendent's budget together, I would actually not do a percentage on the, I'm just sharing, not do a percentage on the professional staff scale, which Mr. Kimball and I've talked about, because the scale is competitive, and that's what we've been doing for four years. So the step, yes, but you don't need the same increase on the scale where your support staff, and I know Hunter's going to share that in a minute, you probably need a 2% if you stick with their scale, because we really haven't been doing that for support staff. And our administrative staff is kind of in that same boat, but you probably could do a 1% there. So that's just some of the conversations we've had very early on, because it is November.
Yeah, and again, thank you, Dr. Jones. The idea of presenting this to the board, you know, is not to make recommendations at all, it's just simply to lay out, you know, what's on the table, what are the prices, price tags on the various items under consideration and discussion currently. Moving on to the next slide, as Dr. Jones mentioned, this is a draft of support salary comparisons that are currently underway, comparing Falls Church hourly rates of support, certain support staff salaries, to that of Arlington, Alexandria, and Fairfax. This is not an exhaustive list, this is just simply meant to be an example. It's a draft, it's still a work in progress. I will point out, however, that initial work suggests that some support staff salary scales do appear to need to be adjusted for competitiveness, not all of them. And it may be a matter of just identifying, you know, which scales are falling into that number three, number four range, and what would it take in terms of an adjustment of 1% or 2% to get them, to get them back and closer to the middle of the pack or towards the front of the pack. Likewise, the next, these are the eight and a half by 14s, I have them in front of you. Looking at our teacher salary scale this year compared with Arlington, so this is, this is actual, this is Falls Church actuals with the Arlington actual scales. What we see is, you know, given the school board worked plan, overall, general guidance of keeping Falls Church teacher salaries within 3% to 5% of Fairfax, those areas that I've circled-
Arlington.
I mean Arlington, sorry. That those areas that I've circled are really, you know, are of concern, because they fall in the 5-point-something, 6-point-something range. I will point out that at the end of the BA18 lanes, we run into the same issue as well, but after some discussions, the BA18 lane is really, we have always considered that a transitional lane, that it is, it's the bridge between the BA and the MA. And in terms of, you know, obviously, because of the truncated nature of it, it only has 17 steps and not 29, that the expectation is that professional staff would eventually make their way over to the MAA, MA30. So, speaking personally, not so concerned about that lane, per se, because the expectation is that the folks who are on it, who have come from the BA- is that the folks who are on it, who have come from the BA, would move over to the MA at some point. But that said, just looking at where our salaries fall out compared to Arlington's, there are some areas that are, still fall out of the general guidance. So, did a quick and dirty, how can we fix this sort of thing? And the next slide shows one potential way to address it. And what I've done here is, you'll kind of see the boxes and the grid below. What those are, those are Arlington's longevity steps, where they get their staff up to a higher salary earlier, and then they hold them for four years, and after four years, increase the salary, and then hold it again for four years, another four years, another four years. Our staff and our administration felt that really it's important for staff to see some sort of a salary increase from one year to the next, that we've had, have had longevity steps, scales with longevity steps in the past, and that actually the employee groups recommended getting rid of those. So, what this potential fix or adjustment would do, would bring the end of the longevity steps up to competitiveness with Arlington. And I have not, and I have not costed this out yet at all, I've just, again, doing modeling and trying to do some creative problem solving with the help of Dr. Jones. But again, this is something that we'll work with the interim superintendent on and bring to the school board for, you know, discussion and further analysis. So, pretty much that's, you know, what we've been looking at, that's what's on the table. We're continuing to gather information at the state level, still gathering information on competitiveness of support salary scales, and short of printing money, just trying to figure out how to fund our needs.
Thank you, Mr. Kimball and Dr. Jones. Any questions? Any thoughts about what sort of budget trajectory we should be headed towards?
Just a bigger one. Not going to be very popular this spring.
All right, there's way too many variables right now, we're just sort of taking it all in, so I don't have anything to add at this time.
Well, I think we're going to need to continue to, I think the chart that you have with the mandates, planning factors, needs and wants, we're going to have to find a way to give people a way to analyze those. I have a hard time seeing how we could just take organic growth and not have tremendous impacts on the, on basically all aspects of the school program. I think we have to find a way to allow people to take some of these bits and play with them a little bit. I mean, going down this chart is a good way to start, but if you look at the planning factors, it is almost all people-related. And I think maybe breaking out the personnel component of this, I mean, we have that sort of 85-15 breakdown. I could be wrong here, but it appears to me as if, you know, really, most of the planning factors are personnel, and it's only when you get to needs that you have anything really other than that. And I think we're also going to have to find a way to allow people to express what's important to them, in a way that also reflects what the consequences of those choices would be. So, if you want small classes and 3% revenue growth, there's got to be a way to show that that's not going to work. So, I think this is going to be something we're going to have to continue to work on. I think the planning factors provides a good sort of notional starting point, but I do think, the other thing is, some of these needs are going to come due eventually. I mean, you're going to have to have some of these, you know, there's fire suppression, there's security, there, with respect to the network, there are various additional teaching resources, there's a K5 PYP coordinator, which I'm sure we're, eventually that's going to move up from a need to, that's going to have to be top of mind. So, we're going to have to keep working on the scenarios. And I think we're also going to have to do a good job to explain why 2% is not going to be viable, and do it in a way that's convincing and clear, and that also allows people to understand, if they thought this year was somewhat difficult with respect to absorbing the additional growth in the school population, you know, next year will be that much more difficult. So, okay. Construction update, Dr. Jones. Thank you again.
On construction, really on Mount Daniel, there's not a lot to say. I know I'd shared with the board that they think they'll have the new numbers, everything's out to bid, just rebidding for new numbers. That's probably going to be mid-January, I think it was January 15th was the date they thought was the target date. And then they'll take those numbers and look at that guaranteed maximum price again, and see exactly where we sit, having cut rooms out, and then, you know, where is the pricing falling on things like concrete and steel, and all the things that had to be rebid. The one thing I would say, I know at our last meeting, we did have a community member comment about why we use all of our contingency, and we went and just spent all this money. If you remember in the summer, those of you that were on the board this summer when we were moving in, we had to get that building back together very, very quickly, because they were getting ready to demo one end of the building. And so, what they have to do, you have to be able to show the cost accounting, you don't just spend money if you're grungly and not show it anywhere. It shows in the contingency line item, because it does not impact our guaranteed maximum price. So, that, but they're showing, they're in the negative. So, if you actually look at the cost accounting, that's why that number shows up. I think it's like, I don't have it in front of me, like $160,000, I think, is what it ended up costing. But, so anyway, when you look at that, just know that that number in the contingency was getting that building back together, and that is not part of your cost accounting on your guaranteed maximum price. They are in the hole. And I'm sure at some point, they're going to try to, in their pricing, be able to, you know, get some of that back. And there is, I will say with Arcadis, as we're going to be working on GMP project, I think Thursday morning, right, is the working group again. Arcadis has done a great job for the school division on MEH, there were cost savings, we had cost savings at TJ, we had cost savings at Jesse Thackeray, we had cost savings on HVAC at TJ. They have done really a tremendous job for us, and so I have no doubt that they're going to stay really vigilant, working with that GMP going into January for the guaranteed maximum price. So, I just share, that's where we are, and it's really just waiting now to get that number. And that's, we really don't have a reason either to have kind of an ASAP meeting until we have something to talk to teachers about. They want to know when they're going to have to actually start shuttling. And Sevy knows that that's going to be sometime in May, and he'll be meeting with the staff once we get that hard number as well. And then also having kind of a community meeting for the Mount Daniel parents that want to hear more about the planning as you head into summer, going into the fall. So, it's on everybody's radar, it's just they're not ready to meet yet, because there's nothing new to update. That's all on the construction right now.
Questions? All right, next we move to item nine, future agenda topics. This is where board members can present issues on their minds and see if those ideas have some traction on the board, such that we should add them to our agenda. Dr. Jones, I'm sure our predecessor will get a copy of all the things that we've yet to address in our future agenda hopper.
We've come through it.
We're current?
About two meetings ago.
Wow, okay. Well, does anybody, Ms. Gill?
Yeah, I just have one. Kate Carstens came and spoke a few weeks ago about prior review at Mason, I just want to make sure we put that on the agenda to discuss at some point, I don't want it to fall through the cracks.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
You stole my thunder, Ms. Gill. I was going to say the same one.
Anything else? Well, yeah, other than budget, I mean, I do think, I do think having a, having a long conversation about the budget is going to be a requirement. I would say one other important facilities-related project is going to be in light of the latest demographic projections, that we are going to need to take another look at our facilities planning. I think graphs showing which sites are timing out in terms of capacity provides some baseline guidance, but we are going to face other construction capital challenges, and I think we need to find a way to start integrating this new level of growth into our planning. And so, I think getting a reva, you know, building on the work that's been done, but refreshing it and updating it with the information that we have is going to be really important. So, anything else? Mr. Lawrence?
We need to do some housekeeping on policy, community relations, the 5.12, because we had things that were sort of on hold, and then they got pushed back by others. But when we were going through the speak bylaws the other day, they even pointed out some things that were, you know, a little inconsistent in what we had. Student liaison, so we just have housekeeping, not huge things, but bits and pieces here and there.
Okay, thank you very much.
Well, and I will say Tricia Mensen will be here as of next Monday, so that will make a huge difference. And just as a reminder, she is only chief legal, where, you know, Mr. Horn wore a zillion hats, so I think the policy side will probably be a little bit easier for her, because she's just focused on legal, so we'll be excited to have her on site.
Yes, we are looking forward to that, great deal.
Mr. Chair, while we're on that, where are we with those student trips, exchange programs? Is that something, maybe that can become another future agenda item?
Yeah, right now, they're on hold, just simply because I think the teachers weren't taking the trips this year, so we haven't had any requests. And it had to do with the structure in them deciding whether or not they wanted to operate under the new structure.
Okay, yeah, we should, we should visit that again, though. All right, now we come to item 10, the superintendent's report. Dr. Jones?
It's late, so I'll make it quick. This last week, we actually went through authorization with NYPD, so, you know, thank you to Lisa and her staff, and for doing a terrific job. And we had several parents that were on the committee for the parent panel, spent two full days, and that was, it was terrific actually to hear the positive feedback, because it has been a decade-long activity. So, you know, congratulations to all of the staff on getting through that authorization. Their formal notification should come in January, they go back and write up the report, but the remarks were all fantastic, so, and kudos to the principals that have worked on that as well. It's really made a big difference connecting our middle school and our high school, having sixth through 10th grade teachers actually working together on professional development and planning together, has really made a connection that we've never, we've never had before. And so, that's just been great. The other thing would just be, you'll probably notice, the student count is up about 10 students this month, that's on there, on there, just for you to review. It's climbing back up to that 2,700 again, it's 2,695 on Halloween, is where we were. And then, the other thing I would just add is from the state superintendent's leadership conference, we talked about this with the principals the other day, in the legislative package, it talked about the standards of quality and some of those changes, and the profile of the graduate, and we are really sitting in a great place. And when we, somebody mentioned data tonight, the state superintendent said their goal is to make sure that in every school district, every single teacher, staff member are looking at students on an individual data level. And I feel like where we are right now, we're in a great place, where it's not, we're not going to have to overhaul a lot, and I think you're going to hear a lot in the next, probably six months, about all the changes coming down the pike in Virginia. Doing away with seat time is really unusual, and I was thrilled to hear Gabe actually say that High C helped him be able to graduate on time, because we hear that a lot from our students. I didn't realize that about Gabe. But that's that whole seat time requirement, you know, and it's just been, it's revolutionized what we can do for our kids, and especially in an international community with a lot of in and out, so. And last but not least, I'll just say thank you very much, and not only for your comments, but for six years that I have been here. I've loved every minute of it. I have, I've told my senior leadership team, and they all know, that I've never worked with an administrative team that has the quality, the expertise, just, not only the work ethic, but they're just all incredibly talented, talented educators and leaders in all of their departments, and it's been my blessing, every minute of it, and I've loved it here. So, it's bittersweet to be leaving, but if I never get my office packed up, they've all looked at it the last two days, and it's an absolute disaster right now. But thank you, and thank you to the school board. You guys give hours and hours and hours. I know many of you know, I grew up with a dad who was on the board for, it was eight or 10 years, and president of the board for most of that time. My mom was a teacher. I know how many nights he spent away. I watched the resumes that he had, sitting in the living room, in the middle of Oklahoma, just trying to hire a football coach, if you can imagine, it's probably the hardest thing. But it just, you give up hours and hours and hours. So, thanks to all of you for being willing to commit to public education and community service, because, you know, the first couple of years I was here in Falls Church, nobody ran for the school board. And the time commitment in this last two years, I've never, in my 20-odd years, seen a school board have the number of meetings that you have, because of the huge issues in Falls Church with CIP and budget and the growth. And I just, you should all be commended, and I hope you know what a difference you make when you have a strong board for staff and for students. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Jones. We will miss you. All right, board and student liaison comments, Ms. Ward?
First of all, the ESOL hasn't met since the beginning of the year, so they actually postponed the meeting till tomorrow, or, I'm sorry, Thursday night. So, if anyone is interested, that meeting is Thursday at TJ Library at 7:00 PM. And then, as far as athletic boosters go, unfortunately, I missed the meeting on Monday. I feel like all I do is go to meetings, and I forgot I had to do something Monday with my own life for a change. But I am grateful to Kate Nesson, because she always sends up follow-up emails, so I usually, and minutes, so I can take that information and report to all of you. One of the interesting things that Kate mentioned, that there are over 400 student athletes and only 95 booster members. I'm sure some of that has to do with, you know, more than one, you know, one of these student athletes in a family, but there's only 95 members, and I just want to encourage anyone who, not only if you have a student athlete, to please join, but also even if you don't, and you just like high school sports and want to support the boosters, they do a lot of wonderful things for our sports, for our coaches, for the kids. So, it only costs $30 a year to join, and that entitles you to buy a 10-pack ticket to go to any game for $40, other than the playoff games. So, that's a dollar savings per ticket, so you get $10 off. Anyway, I'm exhausted, and I don't know if I'm making any sense at this point, but I do want to plug the athletic boosters, and I want to just reiterate what a great job they do, and how much support they provide to our athletic program. We couldn't have our athletic programs without them and without the members. So, please, if you're on the fence about joining, please consider. Thank you.
Hey, Ms. Ward, Ms. Rankuma.
Okay. I was unable to make the last Falls Church chamber meeting, unfortunately, had to run up for college visit. High school, PTSA, we're meeting tomorrow, unfortunately, Ms. Ward and I, and Ms. Hyer are heading down to the Virginia School Board Association Conference, so we'll miss that. GT, haven't had a meeting since the last one, so no real update there. And last but not least, PEAK was this evening, and everything we talked about was put on, basically Mr. Sikora outlined their request and their budget needs, and the superintendent was there as well, so that was, that's the nuts and bolts of it.
Thank you.
Lawrence?
Just a couple of quick things. First, I want to announce that pursuant to Virginia... Just a couple of quick things, first I wanna announce that pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-3712B, this body will meet within the next 15 days at an undisclosed location for the purpose of interviewing chief administrative officers, in this case interim superintendents. The special ed committee met, must have been last week, we have a new chair, John Abrogimento, who's been a member of the committee for more than 15 years, something like that, Jennifer York, a teacher and resident, is the, the vice chair, and they got down to work, doing a lot of work on bylaws, and they are moving ahead very, very quickly. I sent an invitation to everybody, they would like every school member to, school board member to come to a meeting, December is taken, March 2017 is taken, but everything else is open, so please look at the dates, and yeah, you, you got the one you wanted. The Falls Church Education Foundation met last night, they are moving ahead, they had a half-day strategic planning session a couple of weeks ago, I think the big news is, and everybody knows this, they've given 57,000 in super grants and 25,000 in teacher training funds already, so they're doing a huge amount. And finally, Aaron and I are on the, the George Mason Process Planning Steering Committee, whatever the, the real name is, but it's meeting again this Thursday, and hopefully we can help get things moving along, so that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence, Ms. Gill.
Thank you, health and wellness, there's not a lot to update there, but we were all gonna come up with some ideas for challenges for staff and students to compete in healthy challenges, starting in January, so we'll meet again in December to go through some of those ideas. The elementary PTA just finished their fall grant cycle, they awarded quite a bit of money to each of our, our elementary schools for different projects, and they are actively reaching out to their membership to encourage them to participate in the budget process starting now, so they are working to help advocate for that, they put it in the most recent newsletter.
Thank you, tomorrow at, what time is the technology, the technology committee meets tomorrow?
6:30.
At 6:30 at MEH, okay, so that's the next iteration of that, we've been busy working on a variety of things, including the selection of the superintendent search committee, and we'll, we'll continue to be doing a, a great deal of that work, even as we build a budget and try to build a high school. I, I would say, very few things about the next four years are clear, but one thing that does appear to be fairly clear from the financial markets is that interest rates will be going up, that means borrowing costs will be going up, so I don't think, I think it would behoove us to get going sooner rather than later on projects that require capital. And then, you know, not to repeat myself, but we will miss Dr. Jones, and we, we do hope that you will stay in touch, I think if you look around in Falls Church, you, you have left a monument that will last for many years, that will allow people to remember you by the many good works that you have made possible, and again, I, I think teachers are call, teaching is a calling, being a superintendent is a calling on top of a calling, I, I think beatification follows soon thereafter, so I thank you again for, for your service, Fairfield is lucky to have you, and if I make my way up and down to Connecticut, I will stop by, so. The next issue on our agenda is approval of minutes, I would seek unanimous consent to approve the minutes as set forth in the agenda, and seeing no objection, they are approved. We have the latest enrollment figures for board review, Dr. Jones mentioned that we had fluctuation of 10 students, and with that, we stand adjourned, so thank you all.